You're live.
You're live.
You're live? Oh, thank you. I'd like to call to order the meeting of Township High School District 214 for July 13, 2023. Can I have a roll call, please?
Dessling.
Yes.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Heineman.
Present.
Palmer.
Present.
Lauk.
Present.
Walker.
Here.
And Kreiter.
Present.
We have a quorum.
I need a, uh, thank you. I need a motion. We're going into closed session. Should be about half hour?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay. For a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the employment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel to the public body in accordance with ILCS 122(c)(1). And litigation?
We're going...
And possible litigation. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Please call the roll.
Heineman.
Aye.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Dessling.
Yes.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lauk.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
And Kreiter.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Thank you.
So, I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes, and we're going to take these separately. So can I have a motion to approve the June 8, 2023, both open and closed session minutes? Motion, please.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Palmer.
Aye.
Heineman.
Aye.
Dussling.
Yes.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
And Kreitzer.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for the June 20 of 2023 special meeting minutes and the closed session for the June 20, 2023? Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Palmer.
Aye.
Heineman.
Aye.
Dussling. Fiorito.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. And then for the June 29, 2023 special meeting and the special meeting closed, meeting minutes, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Dussling.
Yes.
Palmer.
Epstein.
Walker.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Aye. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comments, and I have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five people that have signed up. So the first person is Jeff First, F U R. Okay, I'm going to read this. You can come up. You can come up. I'm going to read this, and I'll apply to all speakers that have signed up tonight. Okay, it's a time for public comments. If you have signed up prior to the meeting, you have. Believe in, we believe in free speech as the board and district. We value comments from the community at our meetings and through emails. We appreciate everyone appearing before the board and treat all with courtesy and respect. The Board of Education asks each person to please limit all of their comments to three minutes. However, if several people want to address the board on similar topics, the board president, me, may limit the time of two minutes per person. The public comments agenda item will be the only time that the board will hear public comments during meetings. Although comments may be made on almost all matter related to the operation of schools, comments will not be allowed identifying individual students or staff members. The board practice is not to respond to public questions or comments at this time because this is a business meeting and not an open-ended forum. However, we do listen carefully. If requested, a written response will be provided. To be fair and consistent to all addressing the board, the same protocols and procedures must be in place for everyone. The green light indicates your time has started. The yellow light indicates 30 seconds remaining, and the red light indicates your three minutes have expired. Clearly state your name for the minutes. If you wish a written response, please make sure that Mrs. Keys has your full name and address on the side of the sheet.
Great.
You're on.
Okay. My name is Jeff First. I'm a 30-year citizen of Arlington Heights, a proud graduate of Prospect High School, and actually I have two kids go to Hershey High School, too. So I thank you for your service. District 214 has had a huge part of my and my family's life, and I appreciate.
Jeff, could you hold the microphone up?
I appreciate everything.
Because it's being recorded.
I'm tall. All right. I did come tonight, though, to address what is perceived as a little bit of a roadblock with the Chicago Bears. And I think it's exciting for the area. The facts, as I know them, is that Kevin Warren and the Bears had spoken to the school district, not only you but other school districts, and since then has had no response back. Sounds like communications, for whatever reason, have broken down. Additional facts are the Bears are going to build a new stadium. I mean, they've been very clear. I think for our region, it would be a great opportunity. They are going to move forward to the Dome Stadium. Unfortunately, I think now other communities have become involved, so Naperville, Aurora, Chicago's back in the mix, and others. So the Bears are actively soliciting new offers. And then there's this debate over valuation property, right? So from what I understand, the property value with Churchill Downs was about $33 million. Obviously, the Bears bought it for $197 million, and I'm sure that part of the debate with the school districts is, what's the value at this point? It's underdeveloped or undeveloped. They're tearing down the stadium, so on and so forth. So the questions that I have today are really around, why is District 214 not having open discussions with the Bears? One, because I feel like time is of the essence. Two, why is there not full transparency with residents of District 214? The facts I've gotten, I've kind of pieced together based on what I've learned, but I've never seen anything officially from the district or from anyone that says, here's kind of where we stand and what we feel like, and we're working with the Bears to work through this. And really, you know, the question is, are we willing to lose this opportunity without having open discussions? I think the one piece I'll leave you with is that I don't think anything's going to get solved unless there are discussions going both ways. And I'm sure it's a complex topic, but nothing's going to get resolved by not talking. So that's what I'll leave you with.
Thank you. The next speaker, is it Lita Vega? Is I saying that right? Okay. Ernie, sorry, Ernie, I can't. What do you, Rose? Okay. Okay, Ernie, the same, my speech applies to you, okay?
You gotta move this down.
Yeah, you can move it down. Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry I'm so orange. It's very hard to find a reasonable orange dress shirt. My name's Ernie Rose, and I'm an Arlington Heights resident, parent, and business owner. I want to thank all of you for your public service. I recognize that you're all my neighbors, and you're serving our community in what is largely a thankless role. And I appreciate your willingness to sit up there and make difficult decisions. Like Mr. First, I'm here to speak about the ongoing negotiations between District 214 and the Chicago Bears. The Cook County Assessor has put us all in a difficult position, having dramatically over-assessed the Arlington Park property, resulting in a tax bill about five times what was paid by Churchill Downs, the prior owner. No rational business owner will develop this land with that valuation. Recognizing that issue, the parties, primarily the Bears and the school boards, have entered into negotiations. The Bears made a proposal to pay taxes above and beyond what Churchill was paying in 2021, $1.5 million more, about a 50% increase, despite no real revenue and no children to educate on the property. Per public reports, the last communicated offer from the school board back to the Bears was $7.9 million, five times, five million more than what Churchill was paying in 2021, again, despite no revenue at the property and no new children to educate. Kevin Warren, the Bears president, has asked to discuss this with you directly, and has been reported directly by Mr. Warren. These conversations are not happening. Instead, we've entered what Dr. Seuss in Oh, The Places You'll Go, I apologize, I only read kids' books at this point, calls the waiting place. You know, waiting for a phone to ring, a yes or a no, or in our case here, information from the assessor, information from Springfield, information from the Bears. As an attorney, I've seen the waiting strategy before. Sometimes it works. Other times, it runs up legal bills, leads parties to dig into their current positions, and breeds resentment and distrust. It also comes with opportunity cost. Our cost here, the Bears are receiving offers left and right from other municipalities who see the value in a multi-billion dollar development in their backyard. The Bears have begun the process of tearing down the grandstand to reset the valuation at a much lower level at a reported cost of more than $4 million, funds that could have been paid in taxes if an agreement was reached. We've also lost trust in our community when we hear that phone calls are not returned and progress is not being made. As we heard in the Touchdown Arlington Forum weeks ago, this community wants the Bears in Arlington Heights. We want to know what has been done since the Bears invited the school board back to the negotiating table 17 days ago. We believe there is a fair and equitable deal available if we get to the table and work in good faith. We implore you to get to the table and do your best to build a stronger, more economically viable Arlington Heights, both for us and for our future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melissa Care. Melissa, pull the microphone.
Okay, for the policy, policy board member compensation, it says the Board of Education members provide volunteer service. It should be read, Board of Education members are elected officials who have power to make policy, levy taxes, and spend property tax money. And also, update the public comment text on d214.org.
Thank you. And our last one that has signed up to speak this evening is Martin Bauer.
Yes, hello. Good evening.
Thank you.
I too am an Arlington Heights resident. I am the parent of two Rolling Meadows graduates as well as a current Rolling Meadows student. Today, I want to speak to you in my function as a resident and also on the topic of the Bears. I would like to make sure that all of you understand that there are varied positions represented in the community, while I understand that the booster organization Touchdown Arlington is here to present a view that everybody should be super excited about the Bears coming and that we should be doing anything we can, no matter what, to secure them coming to Arlington Heights. I believe that a more cautious approach is appropriate. It is certainly true that conversations ought to happen, right? Negotiations ought to happen. That said, my understanding is that the Bears have not made it clear what it is that they want. They have put out some vague directional descriptions of what developments could look like, but they have really not said what they intend to do with the property. They have not commissioned any studies on impact on traffic. They have not provided any economic impact studies. As such, it is simply too early to give any commitments. At this point, the Chicago Bears need to reach out to you and other government officials and say, this is what we need in order for this to happen. And then you and others can analyze a proposal. Until there is a proposal, you have nothing to analyze. Of course, listen to them. Of course, return phone calls and all of that. But I think it is, it would be wrong for you to provide any kind of a perception that anything the Bears want is appropriate, because frankly, it is not. As far as the valuation of the property is concerned, well, if I pay $200 million, I think my valuation on my property should start with $200 million. That's at least how I am treated when I purchase a property in the community. I can't go to you and negotiate and say, well, I think my house that I just paid $500,000 for should really be $200,000. I think the same rules should apply. And like I said, if it turns out that the proposal of the Chicago Bears is a good one that benefits the residents, that benefits the school districts, that benefits us all, we will all be excited to support it. There may be some room for some public assistance, but until there is certainty for that, it is frankly too soon to provide any assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Okay, up next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Rowe, and welcome to District 214. This is your first board.
Thank you. It feels like it's been like six or seven months in the making, but I appreciate that welcome. And as this is my first meeting as superintendent, I want to take a few moments to share some thoughts and some of my observations as I've transitioned into this role. You know, leading up to this, my first official day on July 3, I took the opportunity to tour all of our schools, met with all of the principals and a number of different staff members, and had a tremendous experience, very positive experience in doing so. And a few thoughts stood out for me, and I'd offer a huge thank you to the board for the process. But to start with my building tours, what stood out was the people, and that's really important to me. As a person who values relationships at my core, and I lead based on the relationships that I have in building meaningful relationships, the fact that people stood out to the extent that they have, it only excites me more about what's to come. The support that these seven people have provided to me in this transition, as well as the open mind that they've come to of doing things a little bit differently than they've experienced over the last 18 years, is something that I greatly appreciate. And the changes that the district has experienced in the last year have been monumental. And with that change comes different ways of doing things, and you've approached it with an open mind and an open heart, and I greatly appreciate that. The good news is, on the transition front, is that we're always going to be a work in progress. There's a ton that we have to celebrate in this district, and I could not be more proud to be in this role. But I also recognize that we have many opportunities for continual improvement, and that's the mindset that we're going to take, is we can always be improving. And I'm eager to get to work. I have very high expectations for what we can achieve together, and I'm looking forward to celebrating many accomplishments that we will, that we will achieve together on behalf of our students and the community in the years to come. I'd like to thank those that made public comment tonight on the Bears topic. That's the next topic that I'd like to cover, is this is my first opportunity to do so. I have attended a couple of meetings on the subject with the other school districts, as well as the Village of Arlington Heights. And I'm going to read this verbatim, because it's really an opportunity, the first formal statement. I think some of my comments will address your specific concerns, really all on both sides, and hopefully shed some light on some of the accuracy, at least from the school district's perspective, of some of the things that have been out there. So, you know, first and foremost, I want to begin by thanking Arlington Heights for being a valuable community partner. Although I am new to the district, I know that Arlington Heights has been and continues to be an outstanding collaborative partner. I appreciate the leadership of Mayor Hayes, Village Manager Recklaus, and all the trustees regarding the issue. I have not yet had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Warren or Mr. McCaskey, and I look forward to the opportunity to discuss this project with them very soon. I know Mr. Warren met with the school district's lobbyist and superintendents, who are representatives of the three school boards. For clarity purposes, our school board members have not met directly with the Bears. I, as superintendent, will be acting on their behalf, like District 15 and District 211 superintendents are working on behalf of their respective boards. From what I've read and seen, I know Mr. Warren is a big believer in 1440, the number of minutes in a day, and that we cannot waste time. Like Mr. Warren, I believe we need to act with a sense of urgency to craft our path forward. And I use "our" with emphasis because it's one that is built on collaboration. That being said, we cannot do so in haste, and we, the school districts, will insist that any outcome is made with the best interest of our students and the communities we serve at the forefront of any agreement made. As we did when we scheduled our last meeting, our lobbying team has reached out to the Bears to schedule our next meeting, and we are waiting to hear back from them. Like our partner districts, District 15 and District 211, 214 has been and will continue to be enthusiastic about the potential redevelopment of Arlington Park by the Bears organization. We understand that this has potential to be transformative, a transformative development for our community, and we look forward to conversations with the Bears and other interested parties. We're committed to maintaining an open dialogue with all stakeholders, including the Bears, the Village of Arlington Heights, legislators, and other decision-makers to ensure the best possible outcome for our schools and community. We believe in a collaborative approach to ensure that the Bears' potential move to Arlington Heights benefits everyone in our community. As a school district, our primary focus has to be on the long-term interest of our students and our schools. We are committed to balancing those interests of all stakeholders, especially our students, families, and the taxpayers we serve. Due to the magnitude of this project and its potential impact on our three school districts and the thousands of students that we serve, we need to have a permanent seat at the table. We are currently at the negotiating table and believe we should continue to be at that table in the future as this redevelopment moves forward. The fiscal and community implications of this deal continue to remain unknown. The Cook County Assessor and Board of Review ultimately set the property's value based on the market, not the school districts. While there is a precedent for developers and school districts to help speed the process along by recommending a settlement to the Board of Review for these types of major developments, the school district does not set the value. Our duty as a school district is to represent the interests of our students and their families. Our duty as a school district is to represent the interests of our students and their families, as well as our taxpayers, which includes stepping in when developments could significantly affect these interests. District 214 alone has 19 tax increment finance districts that divert $11 million away annually from supporting our students. Taxpayers from Hanover Park to Wheeling could be impacted by this redevelopment in Arlington Heights. Finally, we believe that we can get to a successful legislative compromise that benefits all stakeholders. We are closely monitoring the legislative proposals and are concerned about the potential school funding implications. The proposed legislation would freeze the amount schools receive for the next 40 years, even if new students attend our schools due to this redevelopment. We are working on potential modifications to the legislation that we believe is a fair compromise. Please remember, the Bears are a private company that wants the best deal for themselves. And while that's good, we are a public school system and want a fair deal for our students, schools, and taxpayers. So, thank you, and we look forward to continuing to work with everyone on the project and all other aspects of continual improvement as we focus on District 214 for many, many years to come. Concludes the statement on the Bears. I have a few other topics I'd like to highlight. We have our School District Spotlight for the month that will be next up. Tonight's spotlight is the 10-year anniversary of the District 214 Summer Musical and a performance of Mean Girls at Rolling Meadows High School. I believe we have a promotional video to share this evening, so take a seat back and sit back and enjoy this, I think it's a minute and a half or so, highlighting the performance.
Oh, oh, sound.
While they work on that, I'll just share just some of the afterthoughts here. One of the challenges I think that we face in District 214 of having seven high schools is having a unified district identity. And sometimes that can be a challenge with seven different personalities coming from our high schools, and I think this is a perfect opportunity where we've brought students from all of our different community schools together for a summer performance. That's one I know the district is very proud of, and I know a couple of board members were able to attend and had shared great things, great things about it. So, district-wide production, I know we can all be proud of. If it comes up, we'll show it again later, otherwise, I'm going to go ahead and move on.
Are you ready? No, shaking the head.
Okay. A few other comments of some really positive news going around the district that I really want to share. I want to congratulate Mr. Paul Kelly, Principal of Elk Grove High School, on being named the Illinois Principal Association President for 2023-24 school year. Mr. Kelly will be celebrated and presented with the president's ring by Jason Leahy, the executive director of the IPA at our August 24th board meeting. So, congratulations to Mr. Kelly. Also want to congratulate Teacher John Camardella, World Religions teacher at Prospect High School, on his invitation from the Secretary of Education to speak and contribute to a panel of, as a panel of experts, at the Free to Learn Inclusion Rights and Accommodations for Students of All Faith and None Conference in Washington, DC. I had the pleasure of visiting John's classroom on my tour of Prospect High School and got to learn a little bit about not only the creation of the course, but the expansion of it across many of the schools and districts. And as a former history teacher, teaching World Religions as a part of a world history course was one of my favorite subject areas, because I saw students in, opened their mind to what the world really was, and every, all of the different aspects and views of life, and life on earth and life beyond, based on where they're from and their, and their culture. And bringing that to our students and having those, those conversations in just a, in a history classroom is something that should be celebrated, and for him to reach this achievement is something we should be very proud of. So, I offer my congratulations to Mr. Camardella and thank him for representing us in Washington, DC. And then finally, I'd like to offer a sincere thank you to the many community groups. Have you noticed the donation sheet that's attached to the agenda? The many community groups that have made donations to the district over the past year, from athletic groups to private businesses. These donations are enhancing the course offerings and programs that we're able to offer our students, and we're able to offer them at a higher level because of that, that support. So, a sincere thank you from, from me and District Administration.
Do you want to say the dollar amount of the donations?
Sure. Total dollar amount for 2324 was $232,938.88 on a wide range of donations from anywhere, from athletic to fine arts to family foundations, as well as private corporations. So, huge donation, thank you very much.
Thank you for your report. Yes or no? Okay, all right, all right. Board member updates. Board Member Palmer, would you like to start?
You know, I don't really have an update right now. I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and pass tonight. Well, I guess, other than welcoming our superintendent, so glad to have you sitting in that chair.
Mr. Heineman.
I attended the Mean Girls performance. That was absolutely outstanding. I can't believe what outstanding singers and dancers we have in this district. And actually, I knew one of the, not the lead, but probably co-star or whatever, and it's her junior year and actually probably her last chance to do this. And she loves doing the plays at Prospect where she goes to school, but she cherishes the summer program.
Thank you. Mr. Fiorito.
Okay, I got three. I'll start by kind of piggybacking off what Mark Heineman said. The performance of Mean Girls at Rolling Meadows High School, first of all, their theater is amazing. It really is really sharp. And this is from somebody who has season tickets to Broadway in Chicago. So, their performance was nothing short of amazing. I'm just so impressed. You know, the first show I went to in Rolling Meadows, my wife and kids asked me, "How long is this play going to take?" I figured it's a high school. You know, performance is probably going to take an hour, hour and a half. It'll be out of there by nine o'clock. And it went two and a half hours, and they did, that was Mama Me, and they did everything. And Mean Girls was even more amazing. I liked it better than the movie. I thought these kids were amazing. My only suggestion to Jeremy Morton, and I'm going to give him a shout out, because it was great, was if he could in the program, it'd be nice to know where these kids went to school at. Luckily, my daughter was a senior at Hersi. She knew some of the kids from Hersi, but these kids were absolutely amazing. Second thing is, I attended the Touchdown Arlington, and I wanted to say that you guys did a great job, and a couple of reasons. Is you were respectful to us tonight. That's what it was at that, you know, thing that you had. I liked the fact that the audience was respectful. Ernie, I thought you did a good job asking questions of President Warren, and there were some good ones. I wish you would have a few follow-ups, but I thought it was a well, a well-attended meeting, and I liked it. I really did. I liked the fact that you guys asked some tough questions, you got some answers, some not-so-answers, but I applaud you guys for putting that together. That was good. And I liked the fact that you guys came here tonight and you showed us the respect that we, we deserve to. So, thank you. Last but not least, I'm going to give a shout out. I had a picture, but they were going to put it up for me, but I went and charged my Tesla on a Saturday morning, and I'm coming on the way back, and I'm at the light at Elmhurst and Golf Road. And to my left is Stark Real Estate, and there's this young girl from Prospect. She's either a freshman or sophomore. I don't even know her name, but she was pretty much screaming at me to get my butt and my Tesla into that parking lot so the marching knights could wash my car. So, I wasn't going to let them wash the Tesla, but I went home and I got my daughter's car. My daughter goes to Hersi, so this was kind of like, okay, how's this going to work out here? Are they going to really wash my car? And my daughter and I, we drove over to that parking lot, and it was amazing. At first, I didn't think the kids were going to touch my car with all those Hersi stickers in the back, but they eventually got to it, and I got to talk to a lot of parents, I got to talk to a lot of kids. Some kids that played the tuba, and they looked smaller than me, which was like, oh my gosh. But I really applaud that, and I'm just telling this audience and these board members, when you get the opportunity to get your car washed by any of our schools, please take the opportunity to go there, talk to the kids, talk to the people. For 20 bucks, you can't beat a nice car wash like I got with my daughter's car, so thank you.
They can wash my Toyota Camry anytime, Frank.
Mr. Dussling.
Yes, I do want to comment again on Mean Girls. Jeremy Morton is the District 214 Fine Arts Coordinator, and he does a fantastic job all year. Steve Calala is the Choral Director at Wheeling High School, and he is part of each of the summer, summer musicals. They put this on with about half of the practice that they do for a normal musical, and they pulled it off in an amazing manner. I love the fine arts, and I have attended each of them every summer. I attended many fine arts events during the year as, as I can possibly do. John Camadella, I've been to his class a number of times. I was there when he first started to develop it, and it's amazing how, what the award that he's getting by being on that panel going forward. So, it's been an interesting summer so far. The Fine Arts Summer Musical's over. Now, it's time for me to go out and watch the marching bands to get my fine arts fix. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dussling. Board Member Wilk? That's right. Sorry. You're up, Lenny.
Okay. So, I'd like to talk about the D214 Education Foundation Golf Outing. Used to be at Chevy Chase. This year, it's going to be at Topgolf in Schaumburg, and we're promised that we're going to have a tearific time, according to who wrote this. So, thank you, Pat, for the writing of this, or maybe it was Sarah, I'm not sure, Stephanie. But anyway, take a look at that. It's on Thursday, September 21st, and it's always been a good thing to attend, so any golfers in the room, please participate if you can. Then, of course, D214 Community Education Fall Registration is coming up. Fall classes open on Monday, July 17th, which is this coming Monday. Several fitness and enrichment classes are available for adults and youth. You can visit it at CE.D214.org for more information. And just a reminder, school registration is out there. If anybody's got incoming freshmen, please get them registered and look for open houses. It's important that we get the parents in for open houses. So, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, board members. We are now at the point of roll call action items, and 9.1 is approval of financial reports. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Dussling.
Yes.
Palmer.
Aye.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Aye.
9.2, excuse me?
I'm sorry. It passed the six.
Thank you. 9.2.
So moved.
Approval of the six-month review of closed session minutes pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. Call, call. Any discussion? Call the roll.
I'm sorry, who's the first?
Mr. Dussling.
Dussling. And Frank? Okay.
No, Heineman.
Heineman.
All right, Billy, board member.
Mr. Dussling.
Yes.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
And Kreitzer.
Aye. 9.3, approval of disposal of closed session. Audio recordings pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Palmer.
Aye.
Heineman.
Aye.
Dussling.
Yes.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
And Kreitzer.
Aye. 9.4, approval of personnel transaction report. Classified and certified. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Heineman.
Aye.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Dussling.
Yes.
Palmer.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
And Kreitzer.
Aye. 9.5, approval of district physical education t-shirts. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I'd like to provide just a little background on this one for you. A number of years, a number of years ago, buildings decided to, to move and eliminate the requirement of dressing for PE. In the, in the course of time since then, they've noticed a, an unexpected challenge in terms of safety in the classroom, of, of not being able to identify who's in PE and who's not in PE, and that's what's prompting this change coming from the building. Building's requesting to go back to more of a required physical education uniform. A number of different options are being offered for, to our students so that they can make the selection of what best fits not only their, their comfort, but their cultural preference in terms of short sleeve, long sleeve. I got a really great deal in comparison to some of the other bids, that the high end of this was $84,000, so we're really pleased with, with the number, but wanted to provide the background and kind of rationale for your decision this evening.
So, we're, we're not going to the bloomer setup that I wore in high school, right?
100% not.
Okay, just making sure.
You can wear that at board meetings.
If I could still fit in it, I maybe would, but it's not happening, kids.
Okay. Call the roll.
Palmer.
Aye.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Dussling.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
And Kreitzer.
Aye. 9.6, approval of intermodal agreement with North Cook Intermedia Service Center for Student Advocacy Alternative Learning Opportunities Program. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Can we have a little bit of discussion about this? Because this is kind of a different, is Dr. Lopez? Thank you. I want you to talk about this, because this is a little bit out of the ordinary for us.
Members of the, members of the board and Dr. Rowe. So, this program is really our North Cook Regional Office of Education. They provide many alternative educational opportunities. This is a program that they've initiated, which ident, has staff members assigned to specific schools. Our sender districts specifically to these two high schools have already begun that program over the last couple of years. They reached out to us and said, "If we would participate in this program, that way the students that are coming in have consistency that are entering those high school." It's a caseload of about 25 students per individual. They assign two staff members to each school that are full-time there. We fund the program initially for the first year, but actually, we get reimbursed from that point forward after that first year. And so, it ends up actually being no cost to the school district after the initial year of the program. And it's to provide another individual that will K-H-S manage and provide support to those students that are identified at risk.
So, how will this be evaluated?
So, the, the program is evaluated through the performance of the students and ensuring that students are primarily on track, freshmen on track, which is really the number one indicator for students graduating from high school. And the goal is to ensure that the students are transitioning effectively and they're successful that first year in high school.
Did all sender districts have this?
No, only, only the send, only, not even the entire district, but only specific sender schools that were sending students to both Rolling Meadows High School, and I'm sorry, the, the second school on there was...
There was a second school?
Yeah. I don't know if it's on there.
Wheeling.
Wheeling High School, that's right. So, so there were just specific high school, specific elementary schools that were serving into those two high schools had the program. There's interest in other high schools adopting the program. We're starting here with these two sites, and then we'll see how it goes, and if it's effective, then we'll explore whether other high schools and their sender schools may want to adopt the program.
Yeah, next year, I'd like a, a follow-up on that.
Sure.
Any board members, anyone else have a question about this? Thank you.
Thanks.
Please call the roll.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Palmer.
Aye.
Dussling.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
And Kreitzer.
Aye. 9.7, approval of legal services agreement with Gordon Reece Scully. Madsku, Madsku Hani, I think. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah. Dr. Lopez.
Dr. Lopez, if you could rejoin us.
Sorry.
Sorry, I should have given you a heads up and just kept you up here.
All right. For this item, our attorney, Laura Knittle, has several open cases with us. She's been our attorney actually for the last eight years, started with Francic, Marnie,
Started with Francic, Marty, and Megan, both of our special ed directors and associate superintendent for special ed, has worked with this attorney for that entire time. She has moved different law offices as she's been offered better opportunities and now a partnership with this latest law firm. And so we're maintaining our relationship with the specific attorney who's moved to this new law firm with the current cases that we have open with her. But we have to take the step to actually approve it.
Understood.
I think the point being that we have a number of open cases that she's managing.
Yes, she is.
Consistent. Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Palmer.
Aye.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
And Kreitzer.
Aye. 9.8, approval of change orders for Rolling Meadows parking lot construction. Motion and a second, please.
Just a second. My name wasn't called.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dussling?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, Bill.
It's okay, I'm over here in the end.
Yeah, I can't see you down there.
Bill, slide in. Mark and I'll make a spot.
I would say something, but I'm not going to. 9.8, approval of change orders for Rolling Meadows parking lot construction. A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is Chris Yule here?
I know Miss Stack is here to.
Oh, thank you.
To address this.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Dr. Rowe. My name is Aneta Mustak, and I serve as Assistant Director of Operations. Tonight, I come before you to explain some challenges and opportunities that we have with the Rolling Meadows parking lot. I would like to bring a little bit of the background. This parking lot, that it will be helpful for everybody to understand why we are coming to bring those change orders in front of you. At the April 21, 2022 Board of Education meeting approved the award of the Rolling Meadows parking lot project for a manival construction that was including 10% to use in unforeseen condition or opportunity that may come up in the best interest of the district. As not many of you maybe know, last year, we have an expected strike that pushed back that project for all of us. Because of that, we, last year, we have the parking lot that we were not able to finish before the school will start. We decide to agree with the manival that they will keep the labor prices for us for next year, that we will have to postpone it. But they will be not able to keep the prices of changing, like the concrete and other the materials that they will have to use for a parking lot. Because of that, we bring in one of the change orders. That's one of the reason. The other one is to keep our staff and students safe. Last year, we decide to patch the parking lot and restrip it that it will be on enough good condition and safe for all of the students and staff to use for our next 12 months. Because of that, that was the other change order. Also, we, this year, we saw some opportunities for us when we started the project. Manival, it's our constructor. We walked through the site. We saw that we would like to bring some changes with the curbs and also with the sidewalks over the winter. We have a lot of the depression. This winter was not very typical for us. We didn't have too many of the snow, but we have a lot of the changing temperatures and the freezes. Because of that, it create a lot of the trip hazard that we add the change order for that, that we would like to repair and replace all of the broken sidewalks and also the curbs. Also, we, this time, we challenge, when we do the parking lot, we do the curbs and concrete, we always call the company that they do different type of the testing for us. One of the testing we do for test wood, it's under the pavement. We did 12 tests with the outside company, and we didn't have too much luck. Because of the 12 samples, we have only one sample that we found, the petroloam. Speaking very simple wood is that it's kind of like the fabric mat that it's doing the stabilization between the pavement and the asphalt. We do that and use that often, and they recommended that because of the soil condition. That this petromat is working to stabilize the finish for us for many years that the parking is safe. When we did the testing, we did test 12 spots. Only one spot we found that. When we start the construction, we were not prepared that we have a lot of this petromat. And to remove the petromat, how the condition of Rolling Meadows parking was, that was very expensive, and we have to bring special company to do that. That was additional change order. We also find the great opportunity to increase the parking spots. Rolling Meadows, it's a big community over there. They have a lot different type of the events, like we have the last one with the musical over there. And the school always struggle with the parking. We found the opportunity that we can remove and redesign the lights over there. Because of that, we increased the parking lot space, but also that brought extra change order that we have to do that. But it will be great, it's just good for our staff and student to have a more parking. The last change order was that in Door 11, it's the backside of the Rolling Meadows High School, that's where all of the buses lay down. And the school administration brought to us that we have a lot special needs students that they use Entrance 11. And Entrance 11 was not ADA compliance, that we meet as operation team. And we decide with the school that it will be the best, that we will do one side of Door 11 comply with the ADA. But right now, when we will open the school next year, all of the students, when they will come, they can use Door 11. They don't have to around. Because of that, and all of the changes that, you know, had happened with these projects, I am coming today and asking for those changes. They are more that we can pay over without asking for your approval. I am very appreciative for the opportunity. I think we did, and I am strongly, I am confident, we did everything what is the best for our student and for our staff. Please, if you will have any questions, I am very happy to answer.
Board members? Mr. Dussling.
I've visited the parking lot over there, and they did a good job with the concrete curbs and the new sidewalks. It looks very nice. Will the school, will the whole parking lot be ready by the time the school opens?
Yes, that I can give the update. Manival, they are really amazing. We were very lucky with the weather. And I am visiting all of the site twice a week. My last visit on Tuesday, I have a picture and video. If any of you would like to see, I can share. I was able to see the finished back parking lot. It's finished, and it's also striped, that everybody can safely park. We are in the process right now to reading. We are almost done. And we are hoping that by next week, Wednesday, with the cooperation of the weather, we should be completed. Then we also have to stripe and do some testing. But yes, I am very confident.
One last question. I think Rolling Meadows is the only one that numbers all of their parking spots?
Yes, that was requested by the school, and that will be project through the operation, central team collaboration, and the team in the school, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
I have one question.
Mr. Walker.
Can you remind us how many parking spaces were added with the renovation?
Let me see if I will have that information with me.
Mr. Walker, I believe it was, I think, I believe it was 10, eight or 10.
Eight or 10. I'm, but I can, I can emulate that answer.
I just, we don't have to be at the same address. As long as we're on the same street, we're okay.
But it was very, it was very good. It was really worth it that they requested. And also, I forgot to mention, besides of additional parking spot, when we have winter, it will be easier for us to plow.
Right. That's the big pickup, is the plowing, the ease of plowing.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Palmer.
So the problem that caused the delay, that was the gravel or gravel strike? Was that the problem two years ago or last year?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes. That was the local 150, the unit operating engineering, then they went for the strike, yes.
And during that timeframe, we did do some patching. We made it safe to use, but we postponed the big project because we just couldn't get the materials.
And a big part of this increase in cost is, thank you, inflation. And the cost of doing business, a lot of it was the cost of concrete and the materials, along with the, what they found beneath, just, you know, having to make some unexpected changes.
And that's all over the place. And then we also, as a school district, we've changed sort of that entrance pattern at Meadows, and that's causing some of the, it's giving us a, now that we're doing an entrance, the buses are going in the back. I know I've been there and looked at it. It's not ADA back there, so we're gonna make it.
Yes, that the centers will be ADA compliant. That was very, that was very important, because all of the buses coming over there, that it was priority for us. It was not bring by previous regime, previous operation team. But I think that's very important for student, that they can very easily access the school.
No, I think that's super important. I'm glad we're doing it.
And like Dr. Rowe mentioned, the changes of the inflation, like we were very lucky with Manival, that they were far for a district and all of taxpayer, that they decide to keep their labor prices. They don't have a control over the concrete, and, you know, the inflation was really big. Nobody from us and the construction, they expected that that will happen for all of us. And I will say that what we did last year with patching and restripping, that was good enough, that the parking was very safe for a whole entire year. That was necessary step for us to do.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Fiorito.
Yeah, I'm gonna piggyback off what you said and what Dr. Rowe just said. So it seems like this project was approved not this year, but last year, so 2022. And in the first point, it said that part of the reason that we have these additional costs was due to inflation. So my question really is not to be properly answered tonight, but do we have any other projects that we approved last year or this year that we might need to come before the board sooner rather than later?
Can I speak a little bit about that?
Sure.
Last year, the operation, when we approved that bid, the setup of the operation was completely different, and our team was different. We didn't have a general contractor working. Currently, we're working with Pepper. They are preparing for us all of the bids. I'm strongly believing that that's the last one that we have from the last year. And when we preparing for a bid process, we have the group of architects and engineering, and also the Pepper. When we sit and we all decide and see how much allowance and come, you know, we have to put on the side. I am feeling strongly confident to say today that I am hoping that I will not have to come back. We all know what is happening with all of the inflation. And we try to work with Pepper and all of architects to include this 10%, that will be enough for all of the projects. I'm not looking for anything on this summer construction that I will have to come back for in front of you and taxpayer to ask for more money.
Great answer. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Fiorito, I can tell you, Mr. Yule is planning for, I believe, in August, in one of the meetings, to present his 10-year master facilities plan. And that will give you a vision into the next 10 years of the projects that are in the hopper and things that need attention. So you'll have an idea of what's big and what may, he'll probably be able to answer that question in more detail when he presents that plan. I believe it's coming in August.
Right, thanks.
Yes. Well, I hope that we also get an update on the summer construction projects with Chris next month, too.
I'm sure he would be happy to share.
And so this was in the budget for last year. I assume it's gonna be in the budget for this year, because we're approving it after July 1, correct?
This one, it's capital planning, all of the projects. This one, it's 60 account. This account, it's floating. It's all over. That mean we have a budget next, last year, and we use the budget what we didn't use coming this year. Because of the summer projects, they go crossover both fiscal years.
Yeah, Mr. Kiefer could give you details, but it'll be in the accounting feature. It'll, it'll get worked out.
I just wanted to make sure that we have it in the budget and that it's there. Yes. Okay. I think we're good. Roll call.
Thank you, Aneta.
Dussling.
Yes.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Aye. 9.9, approval of board policy.
So moved.
Second.
Policy 21257190 and 2.220. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Dussling.
Yes.
Palmer.
Aye.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Aye. 9.10, approval of Freedom of Information Act. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'd like to see a, the FOIA report numbers for the last three or four years. If I could have that, please, at some time at the next meeting or sometime.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we're working towards putting the FOIAs on the website, which would be great. Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Palmer.
Aye.
Dussling.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Aye. Yes, we did not finish closed session, so we need to go back into closed session. Will we have action after closed session?
No.
We will not, okay. So do you want to stick around? You can, but, so I need a motion to go into closed session for purposes of litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Walker.
Yes.
Palmer.
Aye.
Dussling.
Yes.
Fiorito.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
And Kreitzer.
Aye. Okay, we're now moving into closed session, and thanks, everybody, for coming tonight.
I'd like to offer congratulations and welcome to Dr. Chris Podzinski to our teams in the Department of Technology.
Oh, okay.